And before I ask Commissioner Malir to open us with invocation, I just want to. Longtime Columbia County resident Pat Morris Fuller died on the first of September. She. Was a great person and sorry she passed. Fuller family in your prayers. Connie, will you open us with a prayer?
Yes, sir. You'll bow your heads with me, please. The Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day and thank you for the rights we have, including the rights to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we go through this agenda and make decisions. Some of these decisions are going to be difficult and they affect our, not only our families and ourselves, but our community, our neighbors, our districts. Be with us as we, as we have these discussions and take these votes and help us to make these decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Goodbye.
United States of America. Republic.
God.
Is well.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. You have the minutes from the April, excuse me, August 16th. Meeting in your packet. So if you've got a chance to review them. Accept them, I'll take, accept a motion to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Johnson, we had one change on the agenda. G1A has been removed.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. No other changes to my knowledge.
There are three folks who have asked to speak and I'm actually going to move, move you to the point where we get to your item. Again, just welcome to the commission meeting. I hope that. I hope that it's a good, quick and effective meeting and thank you for folks who are here. Commissioners, you have a, the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees. And received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to do so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Go on to debate agenda and I believe we're gonna still. Still. Read the motion even though they won't be here, be here to get the resolution. Is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's correct.
Yes, sir. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. I make a motion to proclaim the month of September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Second.
Scott, is anybody to make a comment on this or?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. I know that we did have a, did have a request here. Just as a side note, I do serve on a local board, the All In For Miller Foundation, who, the. Grover family lost their five-year-old to childhood cancer and now have a foundation and I know that they're very involved in this particular proclamation and they do the gold bows every month and month, September. So it's certainly something worthy of, of, of getting a proclamation to raise awareness for this particular disease.
Any questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Next, Commissioner Skinner, I believe the first motion is to you.
Okay. File RZ 220803. I make a motion to approve an easement encroachment agreement and the request for a major pud revision for property located at tax map 078. Parcel 569 to reduce building setbacks from. Five to 4.6, to retain an existing deck, a rear fence height of 7.4. And to retain an existing screen at height of seven foot on the eastern property line, subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 18th, 2022 planning commission report.
Second.
Matthew.
This is the results of a call, code enforcement received about a. Structure that was built on the site. The red structure you see there was a screen. While their staff found a couple of things that did not meet code. So there's four issues you, the motion was to approve. First one was allowing a deck, a deck encroaching into a drainage utility event. That is included in your part of your packet here, the, the encroachment agreement. Also, you have a three-foot, seven-inch setback into, I'm sorry, to the rear setback. You have a, a five-inch set in. Can I speak this evening? Five inch in.
Clemson one last night.
I was up late trying to watch this finally score. A five-inch encroachment into the side setback. The fence is seven foot four at its highest point. By code, it cannot be higher than six without a variance. If it's above seven, it's required to have a permit. Between six and seven, variance, no permit. And the decorative screen on the side is six foot nine. Again, that requires a variance if it's above six foot. So encroachment agreement, deck setback, fence height and screen height are the four issues you're voting on here.
And the motion was to accept all four?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
File RZ 220804. I make a motion to approve the conditional use for massage for property located at tax map. 082 parcel 079F.
Second.
This is a request for conditional use for massage at this location that was going to be used for treating veterans that are dealing with pain management. Was picked due to its location. Centralized to its patients as well as the ADA accessibility for them.
Questions? Maybe raise your right hand. Motion carries.
File RZ 220805. I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from RA to S1. Property located at tax map 047. Parcel Z4, 043X. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 18th, 2022 planning commission report.
Second.
This is a request to go to an S1 zoning to allow a landscaping business, commercial storage of equipment. Materials. You can see there's a lot going on with some of the early screens here. One thing you see here is there's a. A planned expansion of a pole barn, a future house, as well as a future father-in-law house. You are suggesting, or proposing that the RA setbacks are required for all of this, even though it does go to S1, you still have to meet RA setbacks. Also, this parcel will be split into two separate parcels. One on the western side will be the commercial, I'm sorry, the, yes, the western side will be the commercial. Portion of this property. The eastern side will remain residential. Well, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. There's a lot going on here.
Did any of the neighbors come to the planning and zoning?
Did receive a letter from one of those neighbors, but I'm not sure he attended the meeting.
Your Ivy lives over there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right. He was in, in support. And we did receive a letter in opposition from a neighbor.
In opposition?
Depending on size, if they do less than 18, they would not have to get that variance, but if they go above 18, they'd have to come back.
All right, there's a motion, second on the floor. If there are no further comments, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mark, you wanna, you're up, you wanna speak at this next one?
Chairman Mark Ivey, 730 Stone Quest Lane, Athlin, Georgia. Congratulations on your win last night.
I wasn't gonna spring it up.
Mark is a Georgia Tech grad, so just.
I thought it was gonna be a good game, but I quickly realized it was time to go to bed.
Have no fingernails after that first half.
I just wanted to be on the agenda to speak, to talk to you about the rezoning that we have off Baker Place Road. This is an addition of about 24 acres to our current project called Tillery Park. This property is owned by some of the pollards and relatives and others. It's about 18 different parties and hold that own this piece. Kind of a leftover piece there between the current property that's on for Tillery Park interstate. So when we looked at how to utilize this property, we basically took what was already against it, which was some 50-foot lots and some townhomes. On the, I guess what would be the east side of Baker Place Road. Did put a few 60s in there as well and expanded that onto that piece. The odd shape on the other side that was left allowed us to expand that side of the road just a little bit, which was gaining some additional 60-foot lots, basically. Those 24 acres, it's a total of 82 lots that's being added. I believe 22 of those are townhomes and those are located primarily against the rest area there on the east side. Kind of made sense to turn that corner and keep that park. On the inside edge and then we converted from there over to. Single-family lots. It's essentially the same road layout we had as before. We just moved that connecting road onto the Pollard property versus being on our property. And then we were able to relocate the park that was originally on our property to. Additional land to give us a bigger park area that we. Activity fields in. One thing we hear a lot from, from our HOA meetings is, hey, you got a pool and you got a playground for little kids, but where are my older kids gonna go? Kick the ball, play soccer, football, whatever. And so we've tried to start incorporating that into our projects where we have. Larger, larger park areas to allow those. I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got. It's pretty straightforward. Everything that was approved, Hillary carries over to this as well and we understand all the requirements for assessing traffic as we.
One property adjoined. One that's being developed or?
It, it does, it does not. If you, if you look on the, on the, on the map. Little bitty finger, a little sliver there that kind of comes in.
Mark it on there. You can touch it on your screen.
So right. That area right there, it touches just a little bit, but we're gonna, we're gonna be connecting this road through here. As a, as a future phase. And then at that point, once that connection is made, that'll allow us to then develop this area.
But you'll make the connection and the road first?
It'll be probably made at the same time. But I can't put those lots on the ground without making that road.
No, some. Bucket park. Certain. Size it doesn't maintain. Doesn't, it's a. Issue to.
Right.
Roads and stuff like that.
Now, this will be a maintained, a maintained park area. It's enough land back there. You know, once we get the engineering and the grading plan and all done, we'll know exactly what we've got, but there's enough in there to be able to put an active park. And the park we, this, this park was actually before was right here and the connector road came across. So we've essentially taken that active park and moved it up here and expanded it.
Original approval for Tillery. Talking about. Thousand square. No large lots. We're talking about denied, right?
Right. You've got a little bit right here. Those right there, those are larger lots. And then on this side of the road, right here, those are larger lots. Primarily because you're against the interstate, you don't really want to put your most expensive houses against it.
Like all of these are basically the same size. Thousand square. He had an approval from the original.
Here? Those are your bigger lots?
Like bigger or we?
70-foot wide lots. So basically 70 by 135. They're here. Um, here as well.
We, we are gonna have some.
Oh, yes, sir. You know, all the neighborhoods that we develop, we try to develop with a multitude of price points. We try to have homes that begin as townhomes, that now a townhome starts in the mid 200s. And then all the way up to a 70-foot lot, maybe a home that's in the mid fives.
Trying to make sure that we were staying on focus of what the original intent, intent of what PRD was.
Right.
Large lots.
Of mixture.
And townhomes.
That's right.
An arrange everywhere in between, start and end up everywhere.
That's right. Yes, sir.
And this does include 22 additional townhomes?
Correct.
Is it 22 units or 22 three-to-four unit buildings?
22 units. So we're still underneath the 15% threshold. That's. Guideline in the PRD zoning requirement. They're $250,000 homes. Mark, conditioned to speaks to traffic contributions. You do understand that any calls for signalization, modifications, the intersection, et cetera, are your responsibility? I believe the way the, the conditions were read is we have to do the studies as we progress to make sure that what was in the study originally. Are the counts that are occurring within the neighborhood and improvements that are required because of any changes in those accounts over time, then we take care of that.
Any other questions?
Is the same. Is that correct? Did I?
That's the way I interpret it. I'm assuming you interpret the same way.
If, if the study's required.
If there's a need.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Is there a motion in our future?
Uh, Mr. Chair, file RZ 220806. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning. From M1 to PRD and a major PRD revision for property located at tax map 051. Parcels 049 and 0498. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 18th, 2022 planning commission report.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Believe you're still up, Commissioner Skinner?
Okay. File RZ 220807. I make a motion to approve. The request for a major plan revision for a property located at tax map 077. Parcel 059G to add a daycare to the existing uses.
Second.
This is a request to do a major plan revision for this church. They, they are currently allowed to do a daycare as a church. However, they're looking to do an outsourced daycare. Since they're outsourcing the management of the daycare, it requires your approval. So if they were doing it, they wouldn't be here tonight, but because they're letting somebody else do it on their approved plan, it requires you to bless that.
This is basically a name change for the daycare.
A name change, an operator change.
Operator change. Yeah.
Correct.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe, hold on, bear with me because we had a speaker, Mr. Noah Bradley. Noah, you here? Come on down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Noah Bradley. My address is 129 Charles Fort Way in Charleston, South Carolina, excuse me, Month's Corner, South Carolina. And I was wanting to speak on behalf of Arby's. We have a current pylon there and we're usually, our standard plan is to. Using pylon hat and replace it with some pylon hat of existing, similar size.
I hit the wrong one? We can go ahead. No, it's on me. I'm having issues keeping up with numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I think you could.
Yeah, well, go.
I think you can.
Yeah, of course we can. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. At the planning commission, it was a motion to disapprove, recommended that. We are looking to possibly get conditional plan approval, possibly go down to a smaller size. I know that the code allows 15 square, 15 feet height and 75 square feet max. We have backup plans for a monument to be replaced since most freestanding signs in the area for new businesses. Have, such as the breaks for less has conformed to those requirements. So just wanted to. Provide some insight into this. We've done a lot of these across the country, Michigan. We've got a lot of approvals for similar projects. This is one of the larger pylon heads coming in at a larger square footage, but we've gotten approval through most of these. I understand that the community may be looking for a more monument size, monument to be across the board.
What is, I'm lost. What is the request for? To have more square footage or for height?
Correct. Is to keep a larger height and also keep a larger square footage. We're bringing the existing square footage down to a smaller square footage. The existing square footage, excuse me.
32.
Uh, yes. And we're trying to bring it down to a total square footage of 182.66 square feet.
Which would not require a variance, right?
It would.
Still requires a variance?
It requires it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
The current sign is 57 foot four and 232 square feet. Current code says 15 foot tall. And 75 square feet. So this is a major variance request. They're looking to, they're looking to go lower than what they are currently, still at 53 feet versus our 15 feet. Keep a pylon sign versus our code that says it must be a monument sign. As he stated, breaks for less, Stanton Optical, Wendy's. Ojangles, these are all companies that have recently redone their signs to bring into compliance with our current code. That's why staff recommend a disapproval on this item. You're seeing the change happen in this area, which was what the commission directed us to do. That's why staff recommend a disapproval.
Mr. Bradley, if we do not give you this, this variance, are you going to leave the 57-foot sign there or will you come down and do the 15-foot monument as requested?
Uh, Arby's will bring down to the, probably the 15-foot monument. They want to get the new logo out, so we would most likely cut this pylon. Completely degrade, remove it and then relocate a monument, new footer, new.
So you're not gonna get mad and take your whole store somewhere else?
Oh, no.
You'll still stay there and.
Correct. I will move through, move forward with the backup plans.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Matt?
I don't believe so. That covered everything.
Whenever you're ready.
Ready?
Thank you.
File VA 220803. I make a motion to disprove the request for a variance to section 90 dash 135 signs for property located at tax map 078D. Parcel 033.
Second.
Any other questions? Maybe raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now I'm gonna back up.
Okay, you want me to do the motion again?
B6.
Okay.
Well, hold on. Bear with me. We discussed B6?
We have not.
I know, so.
Make the motion first or?
Why don't you go ahead and tell us first thing?
Okay, so this is a request to allow a existing fence to remain in place. This, as you see here, this is a, a corner lot, so a dual frontage lot. Dual frontage lot here. The red line shows the existing location of the fence. This is a six-foot tall fence. By code, the maximum height of that fence is four feet. Property owner is asking for this variance to allow the fence to remain because he is putting in a pool in his backyard or. Appears to be the backyard. Dual frontage lot here, so the definition kind of changed a little bit. He could pull the fence up to the, to the 30-foot minimum build line, but that would literally be on the wall of the pool. So wouldn't be very functional. He does also have a concrete deck around the pool, so he could, he could pull it up to that concrete decking as well. But again, he has no backyard at that point, no grass, so he's asking for permission to leave the six-foot fence at the location you see on the red line. Been there since about 2018. Have not had any kind of issues with site distance, site triangles from the plates about it, so.
File VA 220802. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90. Dash 144 placement of buildings and structures for property located at tax map 073C. Parcel 306 to allow a six-foot fence within the front building setback.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. B8. Scott Rosamond. Scott, just state your name and record, sir.
Scott Rosamond, 7407 Lakeside Drive. I want to start by saying our neighbors have a huge misunderstanding about what our intentions are. They're trying to do a carport addition to the pool, which we have no issues with at all. The main issue is we have is lighting and I have some pictures here I'd like to pass out if I can.
Sure, just pass them either way.
I've only got four packs.
We'll, we'll pass them up. We're good at sharing. Please, I'll take five minutes for you.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Packet A just shows, there are about eight pictures there, different times of the day over the last month. And their lights are shining directly on our back porch. We came to sit on our back porch, enjoy the lake and our TV and everything else. Pictures show over the last month, eight different times. Sometimes around for five minutes, sometimes 45 minutes, sometimes four hours and occasionally all night long. The very last picture shows our, our bedroom window. Where the light shine through the blinds with the blinds closed. It's just an inconvenience for us. And we, and that's their existing lighting. So they're looking at doing a 28 by 41 addition, which is gonna put them 28 feet closer to our back porch.
Do those?
Oh, yes. And with the lighting that's there now, that would just be even worse. We'd actually like to ask that they can tilt their lighting towards their yard currently for their protect, for their security, not for our porch, you know? Basically, that's the only issue we have. We're just trying to request that they do something with their lighting and when they build the addition, there's some. Conditions are put in where they have to put their lighting point in a certain direction or installed in a certain area where it won't affect our back porch. But they'll be like 22 feet from our back porch once the addition is done.
They, have they said anything about how they plan on lighting up their addition?
They have not. He said that they would point them in a different direction. Me and John talked a month ago and he told me he would move these lights for us. It hasn't happened. I don't know if he forgot, chose not to do it, or he actually lives with his girlfriend over here, so. I don't know if they just made a decision not to do it or if he just forgot about it, so.
Now, we'll say.
We've had other conversations about it also a couple of years ago, but.
Reality is. I don't know how we control him on how he, we can't send code enforcement out to.
Well, I mean.
Take the direction of his light. I mean, I don't have.
Nice and considerate. Being nice and considerate is just a human choice. I mean. Now, they could point them at the ground. They're pointing directly at our house. I mean, if, if a representative can come out and even look at the way they are, if they want to, they get on their back porch, get on my back porch and see what, see what we're going through. I mean, if they would choose to just do it on their own, I mean, that would be amazing.
I'm telling you, I don't know that we can do anything about it. Correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody correct me.
Be very difficult for us to, to monitor.
We can just put lights up and point where we want. I mean. So I can upgrade my security lighting.
I think one of us up here has the same issue.
Right.
Somewhere else.
Yes. I guess it's a shame. I appreciate y'all's time.
Understand why your neighbor wouldn't. I can't understand why your neighbor won't be neighborly, but.
That's a question for them. You know, I feel the same way. I mean, we do everything in our power. I mean, I've got the packet B shows our lights. Because she'd made a comment about our lights and our lights, you can, you can see that our lights point into, onto our porch and into our backyard and no way point towards, especially where their pool is gonna be, where they're fixing to install a pool and stuff, so.
Depending on the degree of it, you could have a civil private claim for a nuisance, but you'd have to look into that.
Have it involve attorney and stuff, which I mean.
Yeah.
I hope it don't have to come to that. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Scott.
File VA 220804. I make a motion to approve the request for. A variance to section 90 dash 53 list of lot and structural requirements. For the property located at tax map 001A. Parcel 185 to reduce building setbacks to. Seven foot on the eastern property line and the rear back building setback. To five foot for an existing shed and deck and a proposed carport and pool. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the August 18th, 2022 planning commission report.
Second.
So this lot here has requirements for side setbacks, rear setbacks of 10 feet. If you look in this location, you have a proposed carport that extends into that setback by 2.9 feet. While the condition is to reduce it to seven feet. Here you'll see where the pool, 0.6 feet on the side. Unable to draw all of a sudden. A 3.4 feet. That is interesting. 3.4 feet for the rear setback on the pool. I will show that this is core properties, it's backing up the Clark Hill. And the last one was the shed here. It shows that it's intruding. shows that it's intrude, uh, intruding into the setbacks, however, that shed is less than four-hundred square feet, therefore its setbacks are five feet, therefore it's not technically violating the code, but since we have a plat here, we're gonna address it at the same time and just clear it all up, so we're looking to reduce these side setbacks to allow this carport to pull, uh, to be built and the existing shed to remain in place.
That is already there.
Correct.
The carport and the pool are new.
Correct. The point out here, you also have a septic system in the front yard, uh, that kinda limits where they can go with certain things. I don't know if you wanna pull in your front yard either, but...
Unless they put another light on.
Unless they put another light.
Can we send code enforcement by and ask them to be neighborly?
I'd, I'd have to have a code to cite, I don't know, I have a code that says you can't have a light that shines on your neighbor's property, that's, that's my problem, I, I don't have something I can enforce. If that was the case, we'd be knocking on every door in the county saying, hey, turn your lights off, I, I just don't know how we can stop a residential property from lighting their backyard up. I, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Maybe the, uh, Rosamond's can get a Q beam. Don't never mind, though.
Well, like I said, I, we, we don't condone somebody shining their lights on somebody else's property, we're, we're voting on what's actually happening, uh, not the lights. We, I think we discussed that, but legally, this board cannot do that.
Can we? It'd be non-enforcement.
Don't think, is that...
There's not a code that supports it, it'd be non-enforcement.
And tell me about the fence, tell me about a fence.
Uh, you, if you wanna speak, you need to come back up, please, sir.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Our, our, our lot is three or four feet elevated above theirs, and the shape of our lot, our deck is eight feet off the ground, they'd have to put a twenty-foot fence up. So, I mean, you know, and that's gonna be costly, and that's, that's something they're not gonna do, so...
Right.
And, you know, we can't afford to do it either, honestly, so...
Committee recommendation was allow a six-foot fence within the front building set. Point to that fence area.
Right, one?
Look, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I got, I got the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Any other comments? There's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. On to you, Vice Chairman Richardson.
Sir, I make a motion to approve first reading of board twenty-two, revision of waiver of appraisals, requirements for the purchase or donation.
Second.
I'm gonna ask Counselor Driver to explain this one, this is his request.
Counselor?
Yes, it's my request. Attorney-at-law.
I think his hourly charge just went...
Uh, I don't charge by the hour for this.
Uh...
Uh, so back in two thousand...
Be short.
Yeah. Back in two thousand and ten, the, uh, state legislator passed a law saying that counties, cities, the state, whoever, could not acquire property from a private property owner, no matter what the value, what the size, uh, without getting an appraisal.
Does this upset you, or you just...
So, even if you were just taking a little tiny piece of land, you'd have to get it appraised, you'd have to offer to, uh, meet the property owner with the appraisal, uh, person, uh, the appraiser. So, but the state law says that you could have a procedure in place to waive this requirement for low-value property. We had a procedure in place, I would admit that our office wrote it, uh, but it was working through that process over the years, we figured out that it was a little bit burdensome, it put every, every time you wanted to do that on the commission. We wanted to make it a little bit, uh, streamlined, the staff can, uh, can do it under this, uh, new revision, uh, based on, they have, has to be reasonable and based on the, um, indicators, uh, that are out there for value, um, and it's for low-value property.
Questions? Motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we're on to, any other legal matters, requests for review, any public comments, any other public comments? I believe we have three issues that we can deal with right here and now, back to you. Well, uh, no, actually, we're going to Commissioner Malia first.
Um, I make a motion to approve the employment agreement with Madeline Brantley, authority office manager.
Second.
Any comments? Motion, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, now back to you.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Columbia Education, parcel number zero five one zero three M, permanent easement, sewer line.
Second. Matt?
This is, uh, located on the, um, Grove Town High School, Wayneview Parkway High School, donated to us as a word for our private developer to be able to run a sewer line that will be dedicated to the county. Since it was owned by the Board of Education, the Board of Education should donate the easement to us versus the developer.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Motion to approve six thousand dollars to Chris and Jessica, parcel number four E.
Second.
Four?
Ninety.
Get on it, brother, come on.
I'm gonna kick off the farm road in another two or three months, uh, probably January, about close to two hundred.
Nice. Motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I think you dealt with all the county business, only need one more motion.
Chairman, a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, we're adjourned.